Morning, everyone. I've got 10 o'clock and I'd like to welcome all of you here. Thank you for being a part of your county government this morning. It's good to have everyone. It's good to have elected folks like Judge Bucci and Judge Lyles in the boardroom. And if you've got your phone still on, I just turned mine off and Marshall will bring the list forward. You can get that. And I will call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners. Thank you. Work session to order for June the 14th, 2022. Paul wrote to the Paulding Countyans. Wait, wait. He wrote to the Philippians. "Be anxious for nothing and everything with prayer and thanksgiving. Let your requests be made known to God." Well, we've got Robbie Finley here from the Fellowship of Christian Athletes to keep up our tradition of an invocation and pledge of the flag. Thank you, Robbie, for being here. Stand if you're able. You want me to just do the prayer or you want me to do the pledge too? You want me to do the pledge too? Okay. All right. Well, let's pray. Father God, thank you so much just for this opportunity to once again come into your presence with this group of folks. I thank God, just the older we get or the closer we get to you, just the more humbling it is that we realize just how good you are and we miss it every day. I think everybody here probably woke up in a bed with a roof over it today and that puts us ahead of a lot of people in the world. Help us never take that for granted and probably most of us have vocations and jobs to do. So, thank you for that, Father, and we get to do it in the great county of Paulding. As always, Father, I just pray that we can just leave something, Father, that's larger than ourselves and bigger than ourselves that other people look to in this county and want theirs to be like this because of what we've done and left behind. So, God, I just pray that you'll give these people wisdom, insight, and discernment and clear direction on where to go and where to lead our county. Thank you for their sacrifice and their family's sacrifice. And bless these other public services that are servants that are in here as well, Father. We'll just always give you the praise and honor and glory and may our kids want to build on what we get to lay the foundation of in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the general public which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much, Robbie Finley.
Thank you all.
Say hello to Cherie. Under the minutes of the May 25th, 2022 work session minutes and the May 25th board meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements this morning in our Team Paulding segment, June 2022 Employee of the Month was Jim Sprinkle, Fire Education Specialist with the Paulding County Fire and Rescue Department. So, let's enjoy this coverage.
Jim came to us in 2018 through our Fire Safety Education Department. And in the short four years he's been here, he's accomplished a lot of things. One of his first projects was to take one of our surplus fire engines and turn it into a fire safety engine. He added all the virtual tools to it, all the screens, audio visuals, and he's able to bring the kids out to the truck during fire safety education and he's able to engage with them and keep their interest. And that's a big deal to keeping children's interests, especially the first graders. We have a lot of children that come back and say they've learned a lot from him just in this last four years. He's made such a difference. He has a curriculum that he puts together that keeps them captivated and that's what you have to do to children, keep them captivated. And Jim's able to do that. He uses a sparky dog and he's known as Jim Sparky. He's Sprinkle. But Jim is just a forward thinker in everything he does. He's doing it for the children. He also deals with seniors and I get nothing but accolades from all the administrators in the schools, teachers. He serves as the second Vice President of the Georgia Public Association of Educators and he's well-respected in the state. And I think it's nothing but up for Jim from here and I'm just so proud of him and glad that he's part of the Paulding County Fire Department and it's well-deserving. And he's always got a smile on his face. He always seems eager to serve and that's what you want in an employee. So, he's well-deserving of Employee of the Month.
Congratulations, Jim, and thank you for all your hard work. Thanks, Jeff, for you and your team putting that together for us this morning. I have no invited guests today. Bit awards, none. Reports from committees and departments. We're going to get a little update here from Ms. Tabitha Pollard, the Finance Director, just talking about the budget process that we're in the middle of.
Good morning. It's that time of year again, but we wanted to make sure the public knows the 2023 proposed budget is out for review and so it can be located on paulding.gov. There's a hard copy out in the lobby here. You can email me and I'll get you a copy of it if you can't get it on paulding.gov, but on the front page there's a notice of proposed budget and within that notice there's a link and it goes directly to the document itself under Finance, Departments, Budgets. It's pretty easy to find, but if you don't find it, I can be emailed at tabitha.pollard@paulding.gov or my phone number is 678-224-4030 to try to get that document out for review. The public hearing will be on July 26th at the 10:00 a.m. work session and the budget will be adopted on August 9th. So, unless you have any questions.
Thank you for the update. No invited guests. I already read that. The public participation agenda items, no one has signed up for public participation this morning. Under the consent agenda, item number two is to authorize the Chairman enter into agreement with Tallyris and Cable PA for the purposes of providing services to the county. Item number three is to authorize the Chairman to execute a contract for the sale of relity for the disposition of approximately .249 acres of property in the amount of $21,122.45 located in Post 3. Item number four is to appoint Ms. Marguerite Sanford Simmons to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Ernie Morris on the Board of Elections with a term ending June 30th, 2023. And lastly, number five is to approve amending the 2022 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting schedule to move the Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, 10:00 work session and the 2:00 p.m. board meeting to Thursday, November 10th at 10:00 and 2:00 p.m. and that's to de-conflict with the election day on the 8th. So, would any Commissioners like to move any of these consent agenda items to regular Hearing no one suggest that, we'll leave it in the consent agenda. Have no old business this morning. Under new business, item number six is discuss action to adopt the Ordinance 22-09, amending various ordinances in response to House Bill 1557, creating the Office of County Manager, adopting a job classification of the position of County Manager, rescinding Resolution 99-23, eliminating Government Services, the Government Services Department, changing the evening regular meeting time one hour earlier, and other purposes. Mr. Jason Phillips to report.
All right. Commissioners, just to highlight a few items that aren't contained in the title of this. When House Bill 1557 was enacted, as you are aware, it created the position of County Manager. So, we have gone through the code and we've updated it to eliminate all previous references to County Administrator and to simply make the revision as County Manager. The rescinding Resolution 9923, that is the original resolution from a couple of decades ago that created the position of County Administrator. So, we just wanted to clarify that with House Bill 1557 being enacted, that this resolution is formally rescinded. There is inside MuniCode, inside the official Code of Paulding County, a listing of the Government Services Department. That department had a staff of one, one department head under Chairman Austin. That department has not been staffed since that time, so this ordinance also formally eliminates the existence of that department. And finally, it moves our meetings at night from 7:00 in the evening to 6:00 in the evening. That's one hour earlier. I think that that will be appreciated by many. Be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
If we're good then, thank you, Jason. Number seven is discuss action to accept a grant awarded to the Mental Health Court and authorize the Chairman to execute all of the necessary documents needed. We have Judge Lyles here. Judge Lyles, I'd love for you to make any comments that you'd like to. I've been to several of the Mental Health Courts and I think it's an awesome addition for Paulding County.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board of Commissioners and our County Manager, Mr. Baker, thank you all for having me. Thank you for the cooperation and support that each of you has lended to this program. And also, Ms. Pollard, thank you and your department for the hard work that you have done and the flexibility that you have shown in working with us in our budget. It really is appreciated. It is a monumental task and I come before you today to update you on the status of our Mental Health Court and the grant recently awarded to Paulding County. As you are aware from my previous trips before you, we began working on the Mental Health Court in October of 2018 with our official kickoff date in March of 2019. Since I was before you last June, our participants in this program have completed approximately 450 hours of evidence-based classes each, 200 one-on-one therapy sessions with their LPC. They've undergone over 50 curfew checks, 26 compliance hearings before this court, and in total approximately 400 substance abuse screens, all of that within the past year. All of that has also occurred while they have maintained employment. All of them are employed. They are also performing community service to the betterment of this county and those without high school diplomas are working toward their GED. In the past year, we have graduated seven successful candidates, our participants from this program, all of which are still employed. We continue to provide therapeutic services to them through our aftercare and none have been arrested on any new charges. We currently have seven active participants in the program and plan to induct our eighth participant on next Thursday. We also have one additional participant who is in a rehabilitation facility currently that will join us again in September, I hope, and that will bring us up to nine active participants. The team consists of my coordinator, Ms. Lauren Ortiz, who is the heart and soul of this program. I simply oversee this program from the bench. She is the one who does all of the work in all honesty, along with our licensed professional counselor. We also have a certified forensic peer specialist who works and meets with our participants. We have surveillance officers. We have drug screeners. We continue to maintain on our staffing team a probation officer, senior assistant district attorney, and currently are also working with the Chief Public Defender, Ms. Angela O'Connor, as part of our team. Moving forward, we are adding, in the process of adding Physicians Assistant Morgan Baker and Dr. East to part of our group of people who are providing services and are excited to begin implementation of genetic testing to help us with more targeted and more focused prescriptions and trying to get our participants dialed in just a little bit faster and we're very excited about that. On a weekly basis, each of our participants undergo six hours of in-person classes. They undergo an additional three hours of virtual classes. They are drug screened two or three times a week and each of them has a curfew ranging between 7:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m., which they are checked by our surveillance officers or if they are at work, we do verify with their places of employment that they are at work. As you are aware, each of our participants has had a dual diagnosis involving a mental health issue and substance abuse and multiple criminal offenses within the past two to three years prior to joining our program. This point, the Accountability Court Judges Funding Committee recently awarded the Paulding County Mental Health Court a grant in the amount of $112,391 for program operations during fiscal year 2022 to 2023. This grant has a required match of the county in the amount of $15,326. I am before you on behalf of the Superior Courts and this program asking that we use county date funds for this match to provide for substance abuse counseling, drug testing supplies, and contract services as needed for our program. The Judges of the Superior Court would like to recommend on behalf of Paulding County that the Chairman and the Board of Commissioners accept this grant and that the Chairman be authorized to execute all necessary documents. You all have any questions for me?
Judge Lyles, outstanding report. Great review and good information. You mentioned something about a curfew check. Is there any way we could get our County Manager, Frank Baker, on that? He goes out late at night, I understand, sometimes.
I'll see if we can add him to the list. What time would you like Mr. Baker in?
At least 10. At least 10. He's pretty old.
We'll check on that.
Hey, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Some of the charges, the majority of the ones that's going through your program, are they mostly around drug charges or what might you see typically in your program?
We literally run the gamut in this program. We have to have a minimum amount of time of about 18 months, so if there are misdemeanor charges, we've got to stack those in order to reach that. But we have people who are in on drug charges, in on theft charges, in on aggravated assault charges. I believe we've had burglary charges. We've had theft of motor vehicles. We will consider just about anyone. The biggest issue we have as far as violence being, I want to make sure, first of all, the other participants in the program are safe, that my surveillance officers are safe in conducting their business, and that our therapists and the people that work with them are also safe. But we will consider just about anyone for induction to this program. If they have a documented mental health illness, we are interested in at least trying to see if we can fit them in. We have taken chances on some people with some fairly violent pasts and we have had a pretty good amount of success to date with those. So, it literally runs the gamut.
Great program. I'd like to also add to your mention of Ms. Ortiz and Judge O'Connor or Attorney O'Connor, future Judge O'Connor. Thank you all for your participation and I know I'm leaving people out, but you deserve the recognition and the acclaim, so thank you for your report.
Thank you all very much.
Item number eight is discuss action to accept a grant awarded to the Felony Drug Court and authorize the Chairman to execute all of the necessary documents needed. And we have Judge Dean Bucci here to refresh us on this.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks for making some time for us. I'll be much more brief than Judge Lyles. I brought someone who's a graduate of our program and I think you'll find her more interesting than me. I'll just say very briefly that, as you know, that the Council of Accountability Court Judges has approved a grant in the amount of $268,066. The idea, of course, is that this is revenue neutral so that the county doesn't have to add any funds, but we certainly understand that by the time Ms. Pollard and everybody else participates, the county really has some skin in the game. So, we're thankful that you've approved these in the past and we ask that you approve this as well. There has been a 10% match. Traditionally, as Mr. Baker may remember, we kind of anticipated that they were going to start creeping that up and they have. It's up to 12%. We ask that that be paid through the date fund, so that amount would be $36,554. I can tell you that since we started the program in January of 16, we have inducted 130 participants and we have graduated 57. We have 34 active participants. I'll be happy to answer questions and I hope you have a couple of minutes so you can hear from one of our graduates. All right. This is Jennifer Bordeland. She graduated in February.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would just like to tell you all what Drug Court has done for me. It's completely changed my life for the better. I started out a little rocky, but through the treatment, through Judge Bucci, Ms. Palmer, even Surveillance, they've all been there for me to support me. I didn't have my high school diploma. I've now got my GED. I'm currently in school at Mercer University to become a substance abuse counselor to help. I want to give back what I've been given and so I'm really blessed to have had this opportunity. I also help a lot of other people that are in the program still. I'm no longer in the program, but I still am very active in the program today and I'm going to continue to do that, so thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate your being here. Judge Bucci, just thank you for your report.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good job, Jennifer.
Next is item nine, which is discuss action to approve the design services agreement with Crofton Associates for Fire Station 13 in the approximate amount of $49,400. It's funded by SPOSS Dollars located in Post 4. Chief Pelfrey, glad to have you bring us up to date on Fire Station 13.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you recall, you approved some acquisition of land on Old Caresville, about three acres earlier this year, and now we're at the design proposal phase of this. And so, we've been working with Mr. Green and we got with Crofton Associates on this. One of the reasons was they were big players in the last station we built and we were very satisfied with the last station they built and it's identical, other than just a small change of battalion office quarters and extra bunk area. So, we wanted to do that and we were satisfied with the end product. They did a great job and they were great to work with. So, we want to use them again and get this thing rolling. We're getting excited about it. We need this station out where it's at. We've got some areas, as I told you all before, that are over five miles in that area, so we need to go ahead and get this going and they can enjoy maybe some reduction in insurance rates and we can increase some response times. That area is still growing. I think there was 4,500 address points, but they're building a lot of subdivisions on Old County Farm Road, Dallas-Aquitheway, and the backside of Seven Hills. And this station will service all those areas, so we're getting kind of excited to get it going. Any questions?
What about the timeframe?
Timeframe, Scott, I believe it was six months. Six months.
To start with, a bit.
To a bit.
Go out for a bit.
Yes, sir. I defer to Scott. He was working on most of it. I appreciate everything he's done working on it, so.
Thank you so much, Chief Pelfrey.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Item 10 is discuss action to authorize the Chairman enter into a mowing and maintenance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the State Route 120 at State Route 101 Roundabout Intersection Improvement Project located in Post 2. Mr. Jones to report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're asking the Board to authorize the Chairman to sign a right-of-way maintenance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation. This is for a project at the intersection of State Route 120, Buckin, and Highway and State Route 101, Highway 101 North, Highway 101 South located in Post 2. This is for a single-lane roundabout. The county has designed coordinated utilities and acquired right-of-way for this project. Any enhancement activity, road, intersection, project, landscaping, et cetera, which encroaches on a state highway requires a special encroachment permit accompanied by a perpetual maintenance agreement to provide continuous maintenance of the proposed enhancement feature or plant material. An approved detailed maintenance work plan is included as part of the maintenance agreement to ensure acceptable maintenance of the site. The work plan addresses each element of the proposed landscape or enhancement feature and must clearly describe all activities required to keep the landscape or enhancement feature in a safe and acceptable state of repair and maintenance, i.e. weeding, pruning, trimming, mowing, sidewalks, et cetera. The county will bear all costs and liability associated with the project and agree to indemnify GDOT. This is a standard requirement for GDOT to allow work in their right-of-way by local governments and we have processed these agreements in the past for widening projects, trail projects, intersection projects. The maintenance agreement must be signed before a project is let for construction. We're getting close to letting for construction, so this is one of the items we need to take care of before we go to that point. And that's pretty much all I have. Are there any questions I can answer?
When do we plan on starting the construction of the road?
We're working towards acquiring, again, as we've talked, those last pieces of right-of-way. If we can't come to an agreed-upon price, we're pursued the condemnation process and we have a, I believe it's on for our last meeting in June, if we can't come to an agreement. We will let it out sometime in July for advertising, a month, 28 days we have to advertise for. So, after that point, if we get acceptable bids that the Board is comfortable with, we can award that project at that time.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Item 11 is discuss action to approve emergency repair of the HVAC unit at the senior center not to exceed 100,000. Ms. Pollard and Mr. Green, team up on this one.
Good morning. I think the HVAC unit at Senior Center is beginning to show a little age and so it's given a little more frequent trouble over the past couple of weeks. And Building Maintenance has requested that we do a pre-award of not to exceed 100,000 in anticipation of needing to change out that unit over the next couple of weeks and we're going to try to do it with as little impact on the occupants of that building as we can, so. Bid prices have been a little difficult to get. I think there's been a little trouble with some contact of sales rep, maybe some changeover, and so we're still working on getting those exact bids, but we hope to have those by the end of the week.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just so the Board knows, we are planning on bringing in some portable units to cool the area that is affected by this situation so that we can continue the services out there. So, I just want to make sure that everyone knew that as part of this.
Thank you. Anything to add, Scott? That is the conclusion of regular business. No one signed up for participation, public participation on non-agenda items. I would ask the Commissioners if they have anything they want to announce or celebrate or just any comments in general, as is our tradition. I've actually got a couple of things. You going to say anything about Washington? Anyway, last Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, 12 individuals from Paulding County, a lot of business people in Greystone and two Commissioners, Ms. Caker and myself, and our County Operations Manager, Scott Green, went along with us on the Washington fly-in. Guess I should have said that first. We haven't been able to do that for a couple of years because of the virus and so we were able to get up there this year and meet with Senator Warnock, Senator Ossoff, and Representative Green and just also have some good discussions. I didn't mention Terry Tibbetts, Airport Director, so he was with us also. So, I think it was a valuable time. We've got support. We've got contacts right there in Washington, D.C. The other thing, just in case nobody else says it, is there is a runoff election next Tuesday and it's the end of the jungle election. Is that what you're calling it, Deidre?
Open primary.
Open primary.
Open primary.
Open primary, okay. We don't want to say jungle in related to anything elections. And that will have Ms. Torres-Madrick-Morris and Ms. Virginia Galloway on the ballot. So it's your responsibility to vote. Are you in the room here, and that may be streaming this meeting? So anybody got anything else?
Question for Deidre, I guess, just to make sure. So is it just a special runoff, or is it the runoff?
No, there is, there is a special runoff for the open primary, and then there is a general primary runoff as well, and that has some state Democratic offices. And then there is a runoff in the post three election that's on the general ballot between Ms. Galloway and Mr. Albright.
Right. I just wanted to make sure it cleared up, because I was waiting. You said it was, I took it it was just them, Virginia and Torres, but it's.
And that would be separate and a part election as well.
Right.
On the same day.
Yes, on the same day, though. Great, yes.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. It's been confusing to many. So, anything else? All right. We will need executive session for real estate, and I'm about to skip over Ms. Caker here. So Ms. Cindy Caker, Commissioner Caker is going to, you got a, we got a video?
Yes, we do.
Excited about it. I haven't seen it yet.
We had our National Cancer Survivor Day last Sunday. My sister came up, my twin sister came up from Florida to spend the day with me, and Angela O'Connor also has an identical twin sister. And they came and joined us, so we had a blast. It was a great day. There were 212 cancer survivors that came on Sunday. That's not including their families and their friends. They were 212 survivors in Paulding County. So, I mean, that's huge. And let's watch the video.
So I'm a prostate cancer survivor, and the theme of today is hope. And so what I wanted to say to everybody today is we've got a lot of stuff going on in the world, a lot of darkness, but what God put on my heart to say is really be intentional in our relationships, and how we love one another, how we walk our walk, how we glorify God, and if he's pleased with us or not. But I just wanted to say to my friend right here, we're talking about hope. We didn't know each other. She heard about my journey through WellStar. I'm a combat Marine, former law enforcement. I was that guy that would not talk to family, friends, people on the job. I was in a dark place. But what this walk did for me was just open up, realize that our greatest strength is in our vulnerabilities. So we're just going to be thankful that we're here, celebrate life, celebrate our freedoms, and celebrate each other. Let's treat each other a little bit better. Let's have a little bit of empathy and sympathy for each other.
We are having National Cancer Survivor Day, sponsored by WellStar and the Board of Commissioners, and I think we've got a great event going on today. We've got fingerprinting. We've got dunk tank. We also have a magic show. We've got food trucks. We've got the axe throwing. There's so much to do out here.
I love it. That's so good. Thanks again, Jeff Harkins and your team for presenting that. And I also heard that Baker Street and Felicia Womack did a lot of work and helped them set up and get everything ready. So kudos to you guys.
We're looking forward to next year, aren't we, Frank?
Yes, we are.
All right. Now we need to go into executive session for real estate, and just remind everyone that we won't come back into the boardroom here. We'll adjourn from the executive session conference room. So I need a motion to adjourn to go into executive session for real estate.
Make a motion to adjourn, go into executive session for real estate.
I have a motion by Commissioner Stover. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. By Commissioner Dunn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.